I guess he was big with Boehner and a lot of the Republican stuff he's talking about. He said he was me. And he said now he's Warren, Public County Representative.
Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, September 6, 2016, meeting of Middletown City Council order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge leans to the flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston, here. Mr. Bohannon?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Picard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here.
All right, we received notice and comment cards this evening, so we can just move to our city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I've got two items tonight to go over. First is we are in the process of working on getting a new Internet contract for the city. The city's current contract expired in July. We've been working with Cincinnati Bell, our current provider, to get a new contract in place. We also currently use Cincinnati Bell for our telecommunications circuits, excuse me. That particular contract will be up in September. Cincinnati Bell has offered a three-year bundle for both the Internet and circuits that will allow us to start saving $300 a month as soon as it is passed. We have checked with other carriers, and that seems to be a very good deal. We were going to ask you for emergency consideration of that at the September 20 meeting to allow us to start taking advantage of that savings. Wanted to let you know that would be coming. Wanted to also give you a budget preview of where we're heading in 2017. The budget presentations will take place on October 4th for everything except public safety. Public safety will be on October 18th. Go ahead, please. Wanted to kind of go back and go through where we are and what we have coming for you in 2017. For those of you, I guess it would be Tal and Steve, that were not involved in my interview process back in 2014, we talked at that time that at one point in 2014, we were actually budgeting for failure as a city. Our revenues were expected to go down every single year. Our expenses were forecasted to go up every single year, and we were actually heading to a point where the only possibility down the road would be bankruptcy as a city. We started talking about how we could start changing that around, and it looks right now as if 2018 will be the highest income tax projected in the last 25 years is where we're headed. Go ahead, please. We also talked about some of our flaws in our budgeting process. We always, in the past, it's kind of gone backwards, where we had formed our budget, let City Council pass it, then had a retreat the next year to talk about what we were going to do that year. Well, we'd already set the budget in place, and we needed to get ahead of that in a way that we were actually thinking ahead of what we needed to do. We also did not budget towards the end objective. One of the things that I saw as community revitalization director is we would sometimes look at things and say, "I have $2. What can I do with $2?" And sometimes the answer is you need four, and you have to. And the question really is, how are you going to get the other two? Not, "What are you going to do with the $2?" And so we started talking about how we could start turning that process around. Go ahead, please. And we started talking about, in the interviews, sustainable government. How can we get back to a place where we are consistently able to pay for the things that the public expects? Go ahead, please. And so in 2016, I brought you a 2025-year plan that addressed the water, sewers, street paving, park renovations, neighborhood amenities, quality of life, and all of the deferred maintenance that have been put back since the recession. Go ahead, please. Then we talked again about how we might pay for that. How would we start building jobs and economic development and things that would allow us to reach that level of sustainability? Go ahead, please. We talked about the master plan. Community visioning is now finishing up. There've been 30, 40 meetings on community visioning. I should have a report in the next 30 to 60 days with our final recommendations of what the citizens would like to see moving forward from their city. Downtown master plan is also in its final stages. They're in probably the last 30 days of finishing that plan. The housing study is now underway. My guess is in the next 90, 120 days, you're going to see the first draft of what we should be doing with our housing. The airport, we're working on the airport layout plan with the FAA. We're working to purchase that parcel on Hook Drive to get us through. The zoning code is in its final places. We should have that, I hope, by the end of the year, ready for your consideration. And as you're aware, we've closed down MPHA. I did touch base this week with both Butler and Warren Metro. We are down now under 1,000 vouchers verified in the city of Middletown, so we are 700 vouchers down from when we closed MPHA a couple of years ago. As the housing study and the community visioning and some of those other plans come together, the final piece in 2017 will be a transportation plan that will look at all those different plans and start talking about how we move people around the city in a better way, automobile, pedestrian, bicycle, and our transit system. Go ahead, please. And the idea of that will then be to take all of these pieces in the prior slide, add them to sustainability in the 2020 plan, and come up with a master plan that gets us back to sustainability and also allows us to move forward with all the things that the community would like to see in their city. Go ahead, please. We also talked back in the interview process about what kind of government we want it to be and what kind of talent would we need to accomplish those goals. Go ahead. So in 2016, we realigned the pay scales in many positions to be competitive in the marketplace. You have a new public safety director, a new police chief, a new fire chief, an assistant fire chief. You have new collective bargaining agreements with police, fire, and public works, a new economic development director, assistant economic development director, finance director, assistant finance director, planner, zoning, and we are working on filling the tax superintendent position and should have that for you before the end of the year. Go ahead, please. We talked about creating a vision and starting to work on the public relations side of the city. Couple examples of inviting Forbes back in 2018 for the 10-year anniversary of their declaration that we were a dying city, becoming an old America city again. Go ahead, please. We wanted to demonstrate visibly how people could see changes, so we started talking about how we do that. We do that internally with the Middletown Way. Go ahead, please. Way we set up last year to start talking about how we handle employees, how we handle the public in our interactions. After that, we went ahead and in 2016, put an employee recognition and awards program together that actually recognized when people met that standard. We went forward. You're about three behind. And ramped up our social media. We now have both my city manager blog, but we've also got Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, of course, the city webpage, LinkedIn. And in 2017, we will be activating a new website that will have an updated and easy-to-use public calendar, an alert center to notify citizens of events, outages, emergencies, disasters, a new forum center that will allow everybody to come in and make it easier to find and fill out forms, and a new mobile app for the community. Go ahead, please. Also in budgeting for city marketing, we had already created the intern position. The CVB is now in the process of hiring an executive director. What that's going to allow us to do is use the communications intern to move to economic development for resident information, revamping of economic development, and that'll allow us then to use the billboard out at the highway, clock tower, and other areas with the hotel motel tax to do regional marketing and tourism throughout the area. And we're starting to see some of the benefits of a couple of years of pushing real hard to get our image turned around. Cincinnati Middletown was named the best in the United States according to Forbes for recent college grads based on cost of living and available jobs. Middletown was the best place in Warren and Butler County to start a business in southwest Ohio, according to a study. Tree, we've got, of course, Kayla Harrison. We've got the parade on Friday. She was mentioned in the Wall Street Journal in a nice spread. So what does year three look like, coming in with our five-year plan? We know that a lot of our success is going to be based on economic development. We wanted to go ahead and continue to work on the things that we had talked about in the 2016 council retreat. First one is, we talked about downtown being 70% full instead of 70% empty. As I talked a little bit earlier, we're going to see a downtown master plan coming out here in the next 30 to 60 days. Should start telling us the style of the amenities and the way we want to conduct our business downtown. Downtown housing study has shown that there's a demand for 1,000 units in the next 10 years. To that end, we are still waiting on the Ohio Historical Community to go ahead and okay the Ohio Historical Tax Credits. We can get Guess Tower underway. We will be looking at the river to downtown. We'll be looking at the Franklin Connector in 2020. We're looking at the River Center, which is designed to start construction this fall, and of course, the existing facade program. It's really cool, as I sat and looked at this, what started as Bover several years ago became Cincinnati State and Pendleton Arts Center in Bover, became all of these over the last year and a half. This is everything we've opened in 2016, in addition to the prior slides, and this is everything that's under development right now downtown. Liberty is scheduled to open up in the next month or so. One bistro was down at First Friday, Piazza Bistro, Torchlight Pass, the River Center, the new consignment shops, Old Craft Studios, Legacy, Central Tap and Pipe, and West Central Wine, all coming together with the Dora and all the things that we have going on. Go ahead, please. Town mall, we talked about, could we get that 70% empty, from 70% empty to 70% full in a five-year period? We've been very lucky that we've been able to land Planet Fitness. Buffalo Wild Wings should be open in the next few weeks. Aspen Dental's almost done. Gabe's and Burlington Coat Factory, and we were able to get paving completed around the perimeter. You have a new sign for your mall. We are working on a new TIF that will start capturing the improvements to the real estate around the mall, and of course, we will continue that process. We've got a meeting with George coming up here in the next week or so to continue to look at what's the next project we can work on together at the mall. Go ahead, please. Out at the airport, I told you we were working on the airport layout plan. You will also see about $1.3 million in rehabilitation of taxiway ramps and aprons due to the grant that you all approved a couple of meetings ago. We now have on the planning agenda the indoor skydiving facility with John Hart that is coming up for approval, and he says he can have that done nine months after everything's in place. Beautiful facility, about 120 feet in the air with a restaurant, climbing wall. It's got a lot of neat features to it. Go ahead, please. And of course, we have a lot of large projects under construction right now that will continue in 2017. NTE still has about a year and a half of construction left. BP is now well underway. I took that picture a week or so ago, and it's substantially changed since that picture. Town Boulevard Apartments, they are hoping in the next 30 to 60 days to start leasing their first building, all completed. That will have 216 luxury apartments on Town Boulevard, AK Steel. I know at least some of us were at a luncheon last week at the credit union. They are on schedule to open, they hope in July, excuse me, in October. They are hoping to add several engineering positions as that gets up and running in full throttle. Cincinnati Eye Institute is well on their way to finishing theirs, and the new funeral home is all going up at the old buffet site. Go ahead, please. We also have, of course, a number of new positions that haven't hit the books yet. Cohen Recycling is now up and running. AK hasn't added their people. Covenant Village over on Cincinnati Dayton is slowly expanding. Many of us were there for the grand opening. It'll probably be several more months before all of those 200 jobs come online, and we'll get the benefit of their income tax next year. Go ahead. One of the comments I get as we're out and about in the community is, "How come everything's downtown? Why aren't you focusing on the East End? Why aren't you focusing on the industrial jobs and manufacturing?" And the answer to that really is that everything is in downtown. Downtown was the first one that was ready. It was ready to go. We'd already primed that pump long ago with the prior council's work on Cincinnati State, on Pendleton Arts Center, the things that had already been laid in place with the Thatcher Buildings that allowed us to move forward at a faster pace. Those were ready to go. Our industrial areas in the East End still need infrastructure. They still need workforce. They have other things that are holding them back, and we are working on all those, but they're not as visible to the public as we move forward. Go ahead, please. There were some interesting things. I was looking, you know, one of the things we talk about, hey, just bring in 200 manufacturing jobs. And this is not apples to apples, but in June of 2016, the Bureau of Labor Statistics said there were 14,000 new manufacturing positions created in the United States. If you divide those by 50 states, which they're not going to go equally, it means 280 jobs for Ohio. There are 3,962 political jurisdictions in Ohio. If you separate them equally, we would be entitled to 0.07 of one job for the month of June. If you did it by counties, there'd be three jobs per county. It isn't, you know, we're better at getting those jobs than some little burg of 5,000 people. Cleveland's better at getting them than we are. But it gives you an idea that you can't just run over there and grab 200 manufacturing jobs and toss them down in May. It's a little more complicated than that. Go ahead, please. Workforce is becoming a larger issue than adding jobs. According to the local Chamber of Commerce, every manufacturer we have that belongs to the chamber is hiring right now. AK has open positions. Almost everybody is looking for skilled people who can pass a drug test and show up for work every day, and that is becoming a problem, not only manufacturing, but service everywhere. And that's going to be probably a larger challenge for this community moving forward than perhaps where we're going to put a new manufacturing facility. We are working on the challenges in May. One of the things, we've had several really talented, cool prospects that have looked at the May facility, looked at the South End. One of the things they've told us is there's simply not a good way to get trucks and the volume that they need in and out of that area back to I-75, which is why we're looking at the expansion of Oxford State Road and why we're extending Yankee Road. We are working on solving those problems while we're continuing to look at the workforce development. But again, those are going to have to be solved before we're going to suddenly probably land one of those large manufacturing facilities. Go ahead, please. East End, you're looking at many of the same types of things. I blogged about it a couple of weeks ago, and one of the problems you've got in the East End is almost all of its woods. And the problem with that is there's no utilities. There's no water. There's no sewer. There's no roads. There's no electric out to those areas, all of which are going to be required for us to really develop the East End to its full potential. There's 600 acres out there. We have started that process with AK. Now we have an anchor out there. We have a road stubbed in. We have utilities, at least that far. Makes it easier for us to move forward as we go forward, but again, it's not as visible as some of the other things we're working on. We are working on an updated study of the Renaissance area. We're working on the site certification with the state of Ohio for at least one ownership team on the East End. We're looking for developers that if we can work on how we would get utilities and infrastructure in there, how we could get that developed in a organized way. We're looking at where we could put retail development through Buxton and places like the Raton Inn and the 14 acres that's sitting up on that site. And we're meeting with Warren County to work about water and sewer and how we would stub that in and get that ready to go. Go ahead, please. Biggest complaint we get is pave the darn streets. It's what we get. That's our biggest complaint that I hear, and I think it's the biggest complaint that you get. Go ahead, please. There's a nice article in the Wall Street Journal over this past week that nationwide, 35% of non-interstate urban roads are in poor condition. We are actually a little worse than that. We're probably closer to 46%. But it's not like every community is in good shape, and we're the only ones having trouble. Awful lot of communities are struggling. And the answer is, you know, when you read the article, state and the feds, when they're looking at roads, they're looking at commerce. Where do the trucks need to go? Where do the service vehicles need to go? Where do we need to go to get people in and out for commerce? And if your residential street only gets a handful of people going up and down it, the local is going to be the only place you're going to get the money to do that because the state and the feds, they don't care all that much. Wanted to talk, another thing that I've heard about for a while and finally decided to look it up. Go ahead, please. You know, Middletown would have been just fine if we hadn't repealed in 1986 that income tax provision that said you had to spend your money on infrastructure. Well, I finally said, I wanted to know exactly what that said. What that said is that, and this was in 1969, one-half of all income tax collected would go into acquisition or construction of permanent improvements or to pay for principal and interest on bonds for public improvements. I can only speculate by 1986. My guess, I wasn't here. If I was looking at how government operates, my guess would be in 1986. We were getting to a place where we had really good capital. Everything was, streets were good. Everything was good. We had this big balance in our capital, and we were having trouble paying for our police and our fire and everything else that was involved in government, and that's why they eventually repealed that. The interesting thing, however, go ahead, please, is we're starting to get back up in the neighborhood of doing that again without the provision in place. We are budgeted for 2017 to have 45% of the income tax collected will be spent on either bonds, payments on prior projects, or on capital projects that are scheduled for 2017. We're not there, but we're also not way, way off either. It's heading in the right direction. Go ahead, please. For 2017 right now, and I'll get into the detail as we get into the projections, but we are scheduling about $5,460,000 in general capital, including $1,200,000 in local street paving for next year. We have $75,000 to continue to enhance the gateway out at the interstate, almost $4 million for the extension of Yankee Road, and $205,000 for traffic parks and building. Water upgrades are another $2.6 million. Go ahead, please. Sewer, another $2.1 million. Stormwater, another $1.125 million. We are looking at putting a new roof on the city building and rebuilding one of the chillers, which were well past due, and the community center roof has been leaking for several years. We are forecasting to put a new roof on the community center for $50,000. Go ahead, please. You have the $1.3 million improvements out at the airport, which means right now, as the budget sits, we are budgeting $12,685,000 in capital projects for 2017. Go ahead, please. We've talked about public safety, and when we were talking about our five-year plan, we said we really need to do our best to keep public safety as flat as we can. Go ahead, please. We have worked on many things, and I won't go over all of them. We've talked about them all. Current projections show a 0.6% increase in public safety budgets. We did talk a little bit earlier in the year about what fire would do to us on the short term until people started retiring and we could cycle around and get those lower-paid positions up to 40% of our EMT positions. So you will see a small increase in public safety, but we are holding that flat while we're continuing to develop more into other parts, including paving and capital infrastructure for the community. Go ahead, please. Quality of life was something that we've talked about significantly. Of course, we were our first Dora in the state of Ohio. I think it's been a resounding success. It's allowed us to do a lot of cool things. I think it's one of the reasons you're seeing a lot of the downtown businesses coming to life down there is that they like that and the people like coming down there. Go ahead. Taking it to the streets has been a very active concert series. It's worked out well for everybody, along with First Friday. Go ahead. Summers in the Park have been well attended. Movies. Go ahead. Independence Day is back. Go ahead. City appearance, we've worked hard on that over the last couple of years. You've got each year of the spring cleanup with Keep Middletown Beautiful. The interchange improvements, which I think it looks a lot better. We're not nearly done, but the upkeep looks a lot better at the highway. We're going to be looking at how we can actually add trees and things to make it more sustainable and better going forward. Transform Middletown Crew, I think, has been a great success. The jail trustees have been out a lot in downtown and out the cemetery cleaning up, keeping things tidy out there. We continue to work on the truck wraps for the new trucks we bring into Public Works. All of those are forecasted to be back in '17. Year-to-date through June 30th, we've got a number of things we've been able to work at. 135 dead trees removed, playground repairs, flower beds, 390 tons of asphalt, just doing pothole patching, repair of 93 street signs, and we will continue all of that in '17. Go ahead, please. We are working on fine-tuning those numbers right now. It'll be a combination of final projections now that August is closed of where we think revenues will be. We'll also be then coming back and looking at the 26 budget as we did, 2016 budget as we did last year, for what we can de-appropriate this year that we know that we're not going to spend so that we keep our general fund balance where it needs to be and we're able to move all these things forward. But we'll have all the exact numbers at the October meetings, but a lot of cool things coming for you to look at for next year, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? Okay, certainly appreciate that update. Lots of good things going on. That brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Skank, have a few things to cover on this.
For your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from August 16, 2016, to receive and file board and commission minutes from the Board of Health from March 8, April 12, May 10, June 14, and July 12, 2016. The airport commission minutes from April 21, May 19, and June 22, 2016. Historic commission minutes from May 5, June 7, and July 21, 2016. Architectural review board minutes from May 24, 2016. Board of Zoning Appeal minutes from June 1, 2016. Planning commission minutes from June 8, 2016, and civil service minutes from July 21, 2016. To confirm the exceptional appointment of Dan Dawson, Field Inspector for Community Revitalization Department. To confirm the personnel appointments of Kenyatta McCrery, Tamika Smith, Tina Kendrick, and Walker Williamson as part-time bus drivers in Community Revitalization Division of Transit. And a personnel appointment for Bradley Sorrell, Maintenance Worker, Public Works and Utilities, Water Maintenance. To receive and file an oath of office for Amadeo Marchetti. And to proclaim September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. To receive and file the maintenance and performance bonds submitted by Fisher Development Company Incorporated for the public improvements in Renaissance Section 5 subdivision. And to receive and file the maintenance and performance bonds submitted by Fisher Development Company Incorporated for the public improvements in Renaissance 2, Section 2 subdivision. To receive, file, and approve the final plat for Renaissance Section 5. And to receive, file, and approve the final plat for Renaissance 2, Section 2.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
And we have one motion out this evening?
To concur with the Chief of Police to extend the hours for the designated outdoor refreshment area to include September 10, 2016, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the Middletown Arts Festival.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to council comments. Start this evening with Mr. Moon.
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to congratulate our Vice Mayor, Mrs. Bronston, on her ordination in becoming a bishop over the Christian education system.
Thank you.
Also, Sunday, attended the symphony in the park at the Woodside Cemetery. Our own Mr. Les Landon was the narrator of Peter and the Wolf. Did a very nice job with four days of notice to be able to do that. And also, there was a passing in the, I guess it'd be the Lot Department. Ms. Church, last week, works in the Lot Department. She passed through the cancer. She's one of my neighbors of one of my properties, and she's a great lady, very friendly, very nice to live with. So I just wanted to pass on my condolences to her family. That's all.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Picard?
Thanks, Mayor. No comments.
Ms. Bronston?
I want to thank Mr. Steve Bohannon for my congratulations. I was ordained to work over a second organization over there, Christian Ed Department, where I compose the curriculum, not only for the churches but for the prison. And I've been in the prison system for a number of years and received a lot of support there, so I wanted to thank you, Mr. Bohannon, for recognizing that. Also, I went to First Friday, which was good as usual, lots of activity downtown. And then after the ordination on Saturday, we went to the Hampton Inn and stayed overnight. That next morning, I met a number of people at the Hampton Inn that were traveling to and from Cincinnati, Dayton, neighboring areas, and they were from Tennessee. They were from Atlanta. They were from Akron. They were from Chicago, many different areas. And while I was waiting for the waffle machine, I met all these people. So we did have a lot of activity over the weekend. I'm sure there were more people there, but Middletown is becoming one of those places where people are choosing to stop and spend the night in between the stretch between Dayton and Cincinnati. So that was great. And I indeed was there at the concert on Sunday. Les did a wonderful job, and the music was exceptional as usual. So I think those are all my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to extend my thanks and congratulations, a little bit of admiration to the Executive Director and the Board of DMI. This was a couple of weeks ago. They hosted the craft brew, craft beer walk, brew walk, anyway. It was well attended. I think they had close to 300 some tickets sold, pretty much sold out. Great turnout, great weather, which probably helped, but really highlighted a number of new shops downtown, as Mr. Atkins kind of highlighted in his comments. A lot of good things going on and certainly a great way to attract some new folks downtown, and a lot of positive comments on the progress that's been made. So I know DMI did some great work in pulling that together. Also, wanted to mention that Mr. Atkins and I had this in his blog today, had the privilege of witnessing the start of a world record, I guess, achievement, or at least hopes to achieve one. We had three guests in town. achieve one. We had three guests in town that hoped to ride pocket bikes to New Mexico from Middletown, Ohio. And these aren't just any little pocket bikes. Got a whole little education on these. But they're modified off-road bikes for street use, travel no more than 30 miles an hour. And I think the current record holder is like 700-some miles. These folks are going to ride for 10 days and cover 1,500 miles as they make their way to New Mexico. So Doug and I were able to wish them well, and hopefully that'll get us in the record books, too, for participating in that. And certainly a great partnership with Start Skydiving back there at the airport. So it was a good time. And then lastly, just to mention, I'm sure folks are aware of it, but this Friday evening, we'll be having a parade for Kayla Harrison, recognizing her second gold medal win in Judo at the Olympics down in Rio. Parade will start downtown here and conclude at Barnet's Stadium. Go down South Main Street. So it should be a great time. So encourage folks to come out to that and/or attend the game. We'll have some presentations for Kayla during the game. And I want to acknowledge the schools for pulling that together. It should be a great event, a great time for Middletown. And with that, we have an executive session scheduled for right now. But I think since we're certainly early in the meeting, we'll just maybe see where we go on the agenda and go from there, if that's okay with council.
Sure.
So I'll let Ms. Cohen get started. We have a number of property ordinances to get through, and we'll give her a break and maybe go to executive session when you tire.
Stop, sir.
When you're out of breath, we'll let you know.
All righty. There are a significant number of legislation on tonight. The first 21 items are asked to be considered as emergency. It asks for a motion to waive charter requirements regarding the enactment of Resolution R. 2016-16, R. 2016-17, R. 2016-19, R. 2016-20, R. 2016-22, R. 2016-23, R. 2016-24, R. 2016-25, R. 2016-26, R. 2016-27, R. 2016-28, R. 2016-29, R. 2016-30, R. 2016-31, R. 2016-32, R. 2016-33, R. 2016-34, R. 2016-35, Ordinance O. 2016-30, Ordinance O. 2016-31, O. 2016-32.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the charter that requires reading on two separate days and consider all of the above resolutions and ordinances to be read one time only as they are emergency measures.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
The first matter asked to consider is Resolution R. 2016-16, a resolution in support of the development of state and U.S. bicycle routes as designated by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials and the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I know we had a presentation on this last time. Anything to add, Mr. Atkins?
No, no.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
If I may, the next 15 items of legislation all involve the appropriation of easements related to the Yankee Road project. Just to give council a bit of refresher on where this process goes, it's a multi-step process. The first step is to try and settle with the property owners. The second step where we are tonight is the resolution that declares the intent to appropriate those documents. Once you have those resolutions, we'll work with the property owners to try and settle again with that resolution out there. It has to be served upon them properly. Once we've concluded those negotiations, probably in the next meeting or two, we'll come back and ask for an ordinance declaring the intent to appropriate the land pieces. And once you have those ordinance in play, anyone that is still outstanding, the Lot Department can file suit against. So we're at the beginning of a stop process where we'll ask you to come back as we cannot settle with these parties. Make sense?
Question for you, please. If we do settle on a price, or I guess it would be a price that the landowner would want to be able to do this, has the budget already, is that already in the bill in the amount for doing the project to begin with? Or is this going to come out, this amount coming out of another fund?
There's an estimate for what the final number is believed to be for the appropriation, for what for each parcel, there's an estimate.
Okay.
And that number is in the budget of what we have. Sometimes they end up a little lower. Sometimes they get, if it goes all the way to the end, it can end up being higher. But there's a set formula that gives us an idea about what we should be paying for an easement right on so much acreage and...
So we've already allocated some money for this?
Correct.
Okay.
So that'll be the next 15 pieces. The first is R. 2016-19, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate three temporary easements, two perpetual easements to construct and maintain a sewer, and two fee symbol interests in certain real property owned by AK Steel Corporation and located at parcel number Q. 654-208-500012, Q. 654-208-500003, and Q. 654-208-500014, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments? Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Moving on to Resolution R. 2016-22, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Mark and Teresa Robinson, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-400081, and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Next is Resolution R. 2016-23, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Mark and Timothy Riley, located at parcel number Q. 654-210-200039, and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor, did we miss number five, or did I lose track?
We're on the updated agenda.
Oh, yes. That's right. That was on the move.
For the state. Sorry. Should've made that a little clearer. But yeah, we have one that we were able to resolve. So thanks for asking. Okay.
That would put us on number seven.
Seven, yeah, for the updated agenda.
Resolution R. 2016-24, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by James M. and Janet L. Rains, located at parcel number Q. 654-210-200032, and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Number eight being Resolution R. 2016-25, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Homer T. Lewis, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-600073, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Moving on, Resolution R. 2016-26, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by William R. and Alberta R. Lane, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-600067, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Item 10, Resolution R. 2016-27, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Marlin A. and Judith A. Hill, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-500025, and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
And item 11, Resolution R. 2016-28, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate two perpetual easements to construct and maintain a sewer and a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Roger Gruy, located at parcel Q. 654-211-500014, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Item 12, Resolution Number R. 2016-29, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate two temporary easements in certain real property owned by Yankee Road First Church of God, located at parcel number Q. 654-210-500017, Q. 654-210-500019, Q. 654-210-500020, Q. 654-210-500025, Q. 654-210-500027, Q. 654-210-500029, and Q. 654-210-500013, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
You doing all right there, Ms. Cohen? So far, so good?
I would like to see a razor.
All right.
Get him there.
We'll get a couple more and see how we do.
Push through, I guess. Item 13 is Resolution R. 2016-30, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Max E. and Victoria A. Kuhn, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-600083, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion or second. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
And next would be Resolution R. 2016-31, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Carol Bryant, located at parcel number Q. 654-210-200037, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Item 15 would be Resolution R. 2016-32, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a perpetual easement to construct and maintain a sewer and temporary easement in certain real property owned by Big Valley Properties LLC, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-500026, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Item 16 is Resolution R. 2016-33, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a perpetual easement to construct and maintain a sewer and a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Emily Florence Belcraft, located at parcel Q. 654-211-600068, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Got our second. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?[1568.51] Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
The last appropriation will be Resolution R. 2016-34, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate three single-sided billboard signs owned by Porter Advertising, which are upon certain real property owned by the Baltimore and Ohio Railroad Company, located at parcel number Q. 654-208-500007, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Can I ask a question where the property is located?
Along Yankee Road.
I mean, I didn't know if it was like towards Meadows or further out towards...
And I'm not sure where that, you asked him for that particular parcel, or?
Yeah, I just kind of...
I'm not sure.
Okay.
The one thing that I did talk to Mr. Lanin about this is this one's a little different from the other ones because Baltimore and Ohio Railroad owns it. It's already designated for public use, and so under Ohio law, these billboards are in our way. We have to actually appropriate the billboards themselves so that we can remove them and be able to extend the road through where they are right now.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Bronston, I think it's right there at the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Is it?
There's a couple of auto yards or scrap yards.
Yeah, about salvage, yeah.
Okay. All right, that concludes our property acquisition stuff. Okay, that's probably a good time to take a break then for executive session. So I entertain a motion of the authority of the Congress Code 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Okay, got a motion or second? Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, who was the second? I didn't...
Ms. Bronston was.
All right. Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
The first matter asked to consider is Resolution R. 2016-16, a resolution in support of the development of state and U.S. bicycle routes as designated by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials and the Ohio Department of Transportation, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next is Resolution R. 2016-23, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Mark and Timothy Riley, located at parcel number Q. 654-210-2000039, and declaring an emergency.
Do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
And number eight being Resolution R. 2016-25, a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Middletown to appropriate a temporary easement in certain real property owned by Homer T. Lewis, located at parcel number Q. 654-211-600073, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Item 20 is Ordinance O. 2016-31, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Andritz Separation for the replacement of missing tiles from the centrifuge conveyor, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we have a presentation on this last time? Anything else to add, Mr. Atkins?
Nothing extra, your honor.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Item 21 is Ordinance Number O. 2016-32, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to create a pilot program to establish incentives to encourage the construction of deficient housing stock in the city, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Atkins?
Yes, your honor, as you're aware, we've got a housing study underway for the city. As part of the preparation of that, staff reached out to local real estate professionals, including realtors, new home builders, and landlords for input. The questions that we were trying to ask were what is keeping you from being more successful in Middletown in the real estate market and what needs to change? One of the things that we noticed from realtors and particularly builders was they said in a typical market, about 70% of new home purchases are bought by people moving into the area. In Middletown, it's exactly flipped around. 70% are people moving up in Middletown. Only 30% are people coming into the community. I asked how we could turn that existing market into an advantage and not a disadvantage, and the answer was that we needed to add additional residential choices that are competitive in the market and competitive enough that they could overcome any perceived issues with our school district. To that end, I've talked to both the realtors and the landlords and the builders. They suggested a small pilot program to see if we could waive the building tap-in fees and permit fees, and the idea would be there would be a development agreement with the builder for new construction, and they would be required to pass that along to the end user, either in a reduced price for the house or in adding additional amenities to the new constructed house. But the idea was they thought that that might entice a few people to go ahead and start a new construction house in Middletown despite some of the problems that they saw with the school district. We put together this program. We'd like to do it just for five, and it's a very short timeframe. I emailed back and forth with Councilman Moon a couple times, and he had said, you know, hey, it's had enough time, it's only four months. The builders told me either this is going to work or that it's not going to work. We've, the legislation you have in front of you has to be under contract. The house has to be under contract by the end of the year, which means they have effectively four months to close the deal. They said either this will work and they'll be able to close the deal during that time and get it under contract, or it won't have worked and we can discard that as something to try. If it happens to work and we're able to get two, three, four, five new houses under contract before the end of the year, then as the housing study comes back and it gives us some guidance on where we should be taking, adding in housing stock and taking out housing stock, we might incorporate something in a larger, more thoughtful way moving forward in other neighborhoods. But this is a chance just to try something unique. It's not a big risk. It's money that we don't have now. We're not paying anything. We just won't receive those funds, and we'd like to give it a try for a short period of time and see if it makes any difference at all.
Okay.
What is the number that we would be giving up basically? I mean, six thousand, eight thousand dollars? Yeah, seven, eight thousand dollars theoretically in that neighborhood. And again, they would be required under the development agreement to pass that along either in extra amenities or in a reduction in the price of the house with the idea that, like I said, if you could build here, you could build in Springboro or Mason, you could get a much more house for the dollar in Middletown. I don't know if it'll work or not, but I think it's worth trying different things on a small basis to see if we can find something that works here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Kank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
No.
All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Atkins. Appreciate your service. And with that, we'll be in recess until our September 20th meeting, 2016, in these chambers. Thank you all, have a good evening.
We thought we got through that in good time.
Did you get, did you get a thing about shirts?
Yeah, I have to look at it.
We caught one time, then we came back.